Senate.
Hey. Welcome to the October first, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is welcome during the public communication section of each meeting and during any scheduled public hearings. We will start the meeting with introductions to my left.
Hi, I'm Eric Casino. I serve at large, but I live in the Lacey UGA.
Bill Fishburne, I live and serve in District Four.
Barry Halverson, yeah, I'm Washington District Two.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Daniel Bonbarker, I live and serve in District One.
Kevin Passinger, District Five.
Yvonne Miller, District One.
And we have a couple of commissioners online, Commissioner Kaiser.
Sandy Kaiser, I live and serve in District Three.
And Commissioner Bartlett.
I'm Bartlett, I live in Temwater and serve District Five.
I am Joel Hanson, serving District Three. Okay, we have an agenda in front of us. I would take a motion to approve.
We need to amend it.
Oh, okay.
Time wise, new business is from six forty-five. Staff updates at six fifty.
Well, I'm going to accept. How long do we think that new business will take? You know, some.
How much time do we need for the CAO update?
Oh, yeah, I thought the CAO was continued. Which is why maybe new business doesn't have that much. I'm not looking at the agenda, my apologies.
You want a copy of it? I've got two of them.
The item is.
It's item four under new business.
Oh, we're.
Position number two.
Turn it over.
On the CAO. Says that that work session will last five minutes.
That should be continued, but.
Yeah. It's it's up to you how long it goes.
Okay.
But a minimum of thirty minutes. Well, actually, two people at the counter, twenty minutes piece, a minimum of forty minutes.
Okay, so we're looking at seven. Seven twenty PM for the staff update. And then seven twenty-five. For the calendar review. Good at the order, seven thirty.
Thirty.
And adjourned at seven thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
Motion to approve as amended. Second.
All those in favor?
I begrudge you.
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Grudgingly.
We have an agenda, thank you. Next is approval of meeting minutes from September third and September seventeenth. Let's take these separately since attendance was different on the two meetings. Has everybody had a chance to review the meetings from September third? I see that there might be.
I just had the last meeting just spoken, thought it was something Commissioner Casino might be concerned about. It was actually the final statement about you and your election. Have you read that statement and are you okay with that? Would you like to get the wording?
From the last meeting.
September third.
Oh. How did it get recorded in the minute?
I didn't get the order.
You accepted the job or something like that?
I think we should have him. My motion. I'm going to accept the minutes from September. To approve the minutes from September third and accept the audio as official record.
Any second then? Okay, any discussion? Did I say that I accepted a position? Okay. I would. I hope I didn't say that because I've been telling people the election hasn't happened yet. So I'm not sure what I said exactly. But I will be stepping down from the Planning Commission when I take office, when I'm sworn in in January. That's the discussion that Commissioner Menzer and I have had. And as of now, that's that's the plan. So. What should the minutes reflect? I don't know.
I would move that it needs to reflect what you said. It could reflect what was discussed.
Yes, it's not a transcript, it's notes.
I would be comfortable saying that I announced that I would be stepping down from the Planning Commission.
Your exact words were when requested by, when requested by Commissioner Manzer. During the meeting because you did not confirm or deny your election. You simply stayed, I was, I'm going to stay here as long as I can until I'm told I can't anymore by ties. So that was essentially what you communicated.
Yeah.
It wasn't even a, I'm I'm an inevitable type thing. It was, you know.
I would be comfortable having it say that, that Joe Hanson announced he would be stepping down as Planning Commissioner in January. Yeah, I think we can leave it at that. I'm comfortable with that if everybody else is.
Motion to approve as amended.
All those in favor?
I. Thanks.
Thank you. And now the minutes from September seventeenth.
Move to approve the minutes from September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. And to use the audio as the. For the record.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? I will abstain as I was not here. Perfect.
I was in Kansas City, Scott got to be chair.
Like old times, huh? Okay, next on our agenda is public communication. I have two people who have signed up in the room to give public comments. And if anyone online wishes to give public comment, please indicate so by using the raise hand function on the Zoom call. Let's see. The Thurston County Planning Commission welcomes public comment at all public meetings. Guidelines, please introduce yourself and where you reside in the county. Please direct comments to the Planning Commission. We may choose not to respond to comments. Speakers are limited to a total of three minutes. The timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. Attendees cannot donate their speaking time to another person. No comments that are lewd or offensive, no comments that are commercial in nature. And all materials provided to the county may be subject to release pursuant to the Public Records Act. Remarks on projects that have already had a Planning Commission public hearing will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. And first on the list is Kristy White.
Good evening, Commissioners. I live in the Delphi Valley of Thurston County. And my comments this evening are regarding the critical areas ordinance, the work you're about to to work on this evening. I've not yet seen all the details and all the planning that the staff have put together yet on the website. But I want to take this opportunity to encourage you to at least keep, if not strengthen, the buffers, excuse me, for the critical areas that we have. It's important to keep our land and our water clean and pristine here in Thurston County. I know that the pressure to from developers and to disregard this, the guardrails and safeguards that we have had for years with our critical areas is enormous. Whether it is homes, apartments, cell towers, warehouses, other industrial areas or industrial businesses. The guardrails have to be kept for this county. It's a remarkable place. We are not King, we are not Pierce, we're not Lewis County. We don't want to be that and we don't have to be. So my ask is this. Don't let the lawyers and the fear of a fight stop you from doing policy and planning that protects the county's rare and extraordinary critical areas. So that's my ask for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
Next on the list, I have Jessica Grub.
Hello, Commissioners and planning staff. My name is Jessica Grub and I live at seven seven three three Kerbal Road Northeast in Olympia. Since you were talking about real world examples tonight, I would like to share mine. I bought my property in late two thousand and fourteen. It took me all of two thousand and fifteen and part of two thousand and sixteen to get my building permit. My critical areas are shoreline and wetlands. I was required to have my wetlands delineated and buffers applied. I was also required to have the critical area for shoreline mapped to show the setback on that delineation and it's also shown on the survey I had done prior to applying for my building permit. During that time that I was waiting for it to be reviewed, planning staff also indicated that I needed a geologist to assess my lot for landslide hazards and steep slopes. It was deemed in that report that I did not have any landslide hazards, nor do I have any slopes deep enough to have any buffer on them by the geologists. All of those professional reports were turned in and analyzed by planning staff. Unfortunately, my planner disagreed with the geologist and it took several weeks to get that remedied and removed from my project with upper management. Now, as I'm working toward building another structure on my property, I'm being told by planning staff that none of my reports that I was required to submit were ever updated on geo data. So my parcel currently shows no wetlands. But it still shows somehow that I have steep slopes that need an assessment. My initial meeting at the counter, the other day, I was told that since my wetland delineation was more than five years old, I would have to pay to have a new one done. And that I would also have to pay for a critical area review permit, even though my new building site would be at least seven hundred feet from any wetland and eleven hundred feet from the shoreline. Shoreline setbacks are only two hundred and sixty-five feet, so this seems like an unnecessary expense based on the fact that all of the work they need should be on file somewhere from my first building permit. Not having accurate mapping is costing citizens extra money and time when it comes to adding structures on their land that was fully reviewed at one point. The CAO has not changed since the last time I built, so no further review should be needed. Anyone who has applied for a permit since the last CAO update and submitted CAO mapping has supplied the county with all of the data they need to make the mapping system more accurate. Those reports should be updated across the county and the geo data site. I'm being told there's an update from when I was at the counter the last day earlier this week, so hopefully I'll get more information soon on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom call that would like to give comment tonight? Not seeing any hands raised. Is there anybody else in the audience in the room that would like to give comment tonight? No, okay. Well, then that is the end of our public communication for tonight. And next we will move to new business. And already two minutes early. And I think we have a work session here on the critical areas ordinance, the update of Plan Stravaganza.
Plan Stravaganza, indeed.
Do you want to introductions or you want me to? Okay. Well, this is exciting. We have a special guest who you have seen, I think, at a few other meetings, but not at this table. So really excited to have Natalie here. Natalie has worked the front counter. She's going to be filling the role of a front counter staff person. And I think what we hope to show you today is how difficult it is to answer questions like Jessica have. That you can have, you can have protective environmental standards, but they can be clearer. There can be processes that are right sized to what people want to do. And hopefully, our, our team, our planning team, will be able to serve our community better by just being able to answer the kinds of questions that Commissioner Kaiser and I will be asking. If we say pause, like, that's not something that we'll be able to answer quickly. Just ask for ask for the grace to, we can come back. This is a, hopefully going to be a more fun role playing exercise and I just want to make sure Natalie doesn't feel like all of a sudden she's got multiple people like at, you know, asking questions that we're just not going to be able to to follow up on, given the complexity of the code in this space.
Mr. Pest.
Thank you, Chair. I know you're trying to be careful with your wording. But are you saying that basically what we just heard described customer of the counter is equally horrifying to you as it sounded to me? And that probably it's due to lack of clarity?
A lot of it, yeah. And and I would say it's it's unsettling and it's common. The, if it was uncommon, it wouldn't be as unsettling. It happens probably, I don't know, multiple times a day. It, the critical, most of the questions we get end up being critical area questions. And the level of complexity or confusion in our existing critical areas ordinance means that we can't provide clear answers. You can have three or four different people read the same provision and come to a different conclusion. We also don't have updated mapping. Some of the stuff I shared last week about, or two weeks ago about, you know, we're using outdated like stream typing. Well, that means we can't just pull in the state information. So you have conflicting information from what we have on our maps, which is what our code references, it has to be there versus what you're going to find if you go to the state's website and they've got, you know, the latest information. And then, of course, you have all the delineations that get submitted, which we should be able to post, but haven't figured out a way to do that. So there's a lot to fix, both from a code perspective as well as process and from a programmatic perspective. But yeah, what, what Olympia Planning Commissioner Grub relate is is common.
If I could follow on to that. Would you say that the, any senior managers or director level have an ability to override decisions or make decisions just based on common sense as opposed to these weird interpretations?
It's limited.
But some.
Some, but it's it's limited when it says that if you're within four hundred feet, you need to do, you need to provide these reports. I, I can't override that. Our senior management can't override that. And then we're undermining the the code.
And how often do these types of scenarios go to a hearing examiner?
I forgot to bring my sheet. No, I think in a seven year period, we actually did an audit. Claire, who isn't feeling well, she kind of kicked off her CAO update with an audit. But we had.
Claire's on the call.
Oh, is she?
Claire's on the.
Oh, there's Claire. I'm just.
Yes, I am seeing if I can pull it up. I remember I saved it.
Coolest audit with pivot, like pivot tables and charts. It was somewhere around like, it's close to eighty from two thousand and seventeen to the beginning of this year. And that went to.
Seventy-six.
Okay, seventy-five.
Those cost about five grand.
Well, that's your initial application fee.
Yeah.
So Natalie, how much do you think they usually run? Because that's just the deposit.
So the initial application fee is right now roughly about forty-one hundred dollars. And then that is a base fee that only covers a set amount of planning hours, environmental health review hours, and dev rev, our public works review hours. If we were to exceed those set base hours, then additional hourly rates will be applied based on each department's hourly rate. So you could have a base fee of forty-one hundred, but after all staff time that has gone into the review, you could have upwards of five or six thousand dollars. And then you have a hearing examiner to deposit for items that go to hearing, and that is a base rate for RUEs of one thousand dollars. And then that once again is an hourly rate, that if they were to exceed those base hours, there is additional cost that can come up. So all in all, you could be spending maybe ten thousand dollars if you have an extensive project that requires a lot of a staff review as well as maybe pushing the bounds of what is allowed.
So if we've had seventy-five, are you saying we've had seventy-five hearing examiner reviews since two thousand and seventeen? Is that the idea?
More than, that, that, that's through the beginning of this year. And how many did, did we say are going to hearing this year?
So we have twenty-eight RUEs that have gone, or will be, will be going this year. Fifteen have already gone to hearing. We have another thirteen coming up.
So it was seventy-five between two thousand and seventeen and the beginning of twenty-five, and now we've had another fifty?
We, uh, not fifty, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. But it, there was a backlog, so a lot of those were ones that were.
So out of.
The rate is increasing.
So out of that hundred and three or so.
No, some of those are twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
We need a process of.
Increase, well, and there's also permitting is like a tennis match. Application comes in, we say, hey, guess what? You didn't do the reports you needed to do. We kick it back. Ball is in their court. Ball can be in an applicant's court for upwards of a year, two years, some, and then some of these cases, three years. So we have added capacity. We also have a lot more balls coming back into our court that we're getting through.
So, so we've had seventy-five that have made it all the way through the hearings examiner process since two thousand and seventeen. How many of those did the hearing examiner say you can't do your development compared to how many did they say you can?
Five.
Seventy out of seventy-five, the hearing examiner went with.
Like stats, commendation and conditions.
So this is the impetus for trying to get some over the counter approvals without.
Not over the counter, administrative.
Administrative, okay. Over ninety-three percent are approved. Okay, so that's why we're towards administrative RUEs instead of hearing examiner RUE.
There is a lot of different tools in in that toolbox, and so I think it's just exploring other ways to still achieve the same level of environmental protection without necessarily having to go to a hearings examiner. And hopefully tonight you'll see through the questions, the back and forth with Natalie, all the things that trigger hearings examiner review.
And by the end of this, it'll be like a tennis match because it'll be love, love.
Such a politician.
Natalie is part of a team that didn't draft this code, that has to administer this code on a daily basis in a way that is really frustrating to a lot of the people that are sitting on the other side of the counter, so.
I, I imagine as basically law, this isn't something that dropped whole cloth. This is something that we've been
No.
glomming on little bits for a really long time.
Twenty, it has barely changed since two thousand and twelve. Which is part of the issue. The reason that I don't, like, we, it's a lot easier to just go in and make some updates. It is so out of alignment with where state agency guidance is right now, that like, there isn't a way to just do small updates. Like, we really need to take a fresh look at what is the best available science now. A lot has changed in thirteen years, and we have an updated shoreline master program, a habitat conservation program, and a new comp plan that the CEO should reflect. Are you guys ready? Is.
I'm on the edge of my seat.
Who's going first?
Anticipation is killing.
Commissioner Kaiser, do you want to do rock, paper, scissors?
Sure.
I'll, I'll just, I'll let you go.
Okay. One, two, three.
Oh.
You both get the scissors.
Okay, let's try it again. One, two, three.
Ah, she got me. You get to go first.
Okay. So does going first mean I get to ask any question that I have here?
We want to do the setup.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna, we're gonna. Yeah.
Yes. I will kind of run you guys through what an average counter experience looks like. So I will share my screen. You will run with me here. I cheated a little bit. I already have your, your property pulled up.
I saw, you probably did.
Um.
There it is.
So typically, we'll just pull up their property in our geo data. And I will let you ask a question. And we can kind of guide the conversation through those questions of, hey, I have this property and I would like this with it.
Sounds good. Okay, um, I'm coming in today because I'm really interested in replacing an existing deck on my house. And I'm just really curious, as I think about this project, what kind of permits I need.
Absolutely. Go.
Just build it, they'll never catch you.
Your neighbors.
Yeah, my neighbors just built one. I don't think they did, I don't think they got a permit for that.
This is exciting. Okay. So I'm just gonna un-highlight the property. We're just gonna quick run through the critical areas that we've got mapped on your property through our geo data.
Can I ask a question? Is this showing that the neighbor's house is half on her property?
Have you never looked at geo data before?
I have, but I've not seen this.
So.
It's like that everywhere.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, the actual property line is shifted, shifted a little bit more northeast. Yeah, that's the real property line right there.
Yes, the joys of overlaying linear shapes over nonlinear surfaces. Because we're, we don't live on a flat thing.
Just try and put an orange peel on the pavement.
Think for yourself, Commissioner.
That is not a debate for this, this planning commission.
Do we need to amend the agenda?
We're not, we're not indulging in the other thing.
We could do our own research and.
See all the boxes that she has to check, and this is fewer boxes than we used to have.
Yes. All right, so initially, we'll just look at steep slopes. We got. There are some steep slopes on this property.
Is there a definition, like a percent grade or something?
Yeah, so a steep slope is identified as something that is typically a landslide hazard, which is over forty percent grade. There are other criteria that it could be meeting if it's meeting certain soil types. And a slope percentage. More than likely, we're going to be applying landslide hazards or steep slopes to forty percent or greater slopes. So this pink that was identified on this is identifying a minimum of a fifteen percent slope. So right there, we're looking at a potential property that may not meet a steep slope, looking at the lidar, though it does appear that there is in fact a steep slope on this property that would have a buffer on it. Keep going through, kind of just give a brief rundown, and then we can go into more specifics. This is looking like it's got some flood at the very bottom, so not something that we would necessarily need to worry about right now. We'll look at high groundwater, not mapped there. Chances of this being in gopher soils slim to none, but we will still check the boxes just in case. Most of our gopher soils are going to be below I five. So most of our map habitat is going to be down there. So with this being on the sound, we're probably not going to see it, but I always like to double check.
So Natalie, are you doing this while I'm standing there waiting? Are you looking at this while I'm right there with you?
Yes.
Okay.
And the application checklist, like for any kind of critical area stuff, have all of these map layers on it. So when you're walking someone through, it's good to check every single box because they're going to have to check every single box.
So then why wouldn't the computer system default to them all being checked and you just uncheck the ones you don't need?
Because there are some properties where things are so overlaid that it is difficult to be able to kind of digest what you are looking at. So there are properties that will have floodway, hundred year flood zone, five hundred year flood zone, high groundwater, gopher soils, screening layers. There are a plethora of critical areas that we do review for and mitigate. There are a plethora of critical areas that we do review for and mitigate for and protect that. It can get a little cumbersome, so.
We do have a tool that GeoData was able to make for folks. Who are working the front counter so that they have fewer boxes to check. And the hope is is that we'll be able to make that publicly available. Right now, we're kind of piloting just an easier format to answer questions.
So you just told us you looked at the steep the steepness um and that. There was this big pink area that was like two thirds of the property, but there's probably only one little area that's actually steep. Uh forty forty degree, forty five degree plus deep versus fifteen degrees. Um it when you're at the counter dealing with the customer, are you able to just see that and make that decision? Or you gotta say that someone from the county has to go out and look at it and praise it?
Um we do have a tool that we can use um that creates a profile based on this hill shade layer. Um so I can show that to you, which we can go through the counter. Yeah, so we do have the opportunity uh to go through and look and see if it's meeting. I did take the opportunity to do that before this meeting, there are portions that are at a forty six percent. And that forty per six percent is about right here, which is right by the house. So um we will, we will get into that.
We don't tradition, we don't traditionally go out on site, we. It would be pretty much every project that comes in, so it's just more of a, it's a resourcing issue. So what this looks like is more of a screen. And then having the person hire a professional who's, you know, has credentials that are outlined in the code. To go look at it on site and submit the required reports.
So Natalie, when you're looking at this as I am at the counter, can I see what you're looking at? Or is there, is am I looking at the back of a monitor?
No, we have dual screens at the counter and so we share our screen. And so as we are going through this on our screen, you guys are able to look at it at that screen as well.
Oh, great.
You're able to see um everything that I'm pulling up um the. Public, there's also public facing geo data that is also able to show this.
Yes.
When Sandy first comes in to ask about building her deck, does she have to pay you a fee before you start doing any of this?
No. This is all free and available to the public within our staff hours of eight to four right now. So public is able to come in and utilize this resource.
Do you limit individual consumption of this resource?
Um we try to do about twenty minutes per uh individual. Since we do see a lot of um people come in to utilize this resource. Uh but we don't necessarily limit if they hit the twenty minutes, um we're here to help. So we do try to give you guys the best information we can within our capacity. But we do try to keep maybe a twenty minute conversation um so. Try to give you the best information we can, but it's. We're always limited as to what maybe we can answer or give a yes or no to over the counter. So.
Okay, well, we're well into my twenty minutes.
That is A, okay. This green blob you guys are looking at is mapping the conservancy shoreline. Um this shoreline has a one hundred foot setback from the ordinary high watermark. Um and then has a two hundred and fifty foot marine riparian habitat setback. From the ordinary high watermark, so there's two buffers that are associated with this uh shoreline designation. Both of those need to be delineated by your surveyor upon your building permit. Um cause those will need to be surveyed and shown in accordance with where the ordinary high watermark is.
Even if it's all the way down, even if the deck is up at the top of that forty six percent slope, do they still have to do that?
Yes.
No matter how big the site is?
If you are within two hundred feet um of any property that is mapped with shoreline jurisdiction. You have to show that you are not in the shoreline jurisdiction.
Is is that two hundred feet from the parcel edge or from the project envelope?
The uh could you?
Parcele edge instead, so is it project based or parcel based?
It is typically project based, so like say we're looking at a a property, this property here. We're looking at a property across the road, typically they are safe. But there are instances where shoreline jurisdictions does cross road. And thus other properties who are not technically on the shoreline are impacted by these shoreline um setbacks and buffers.
But if the deck is over four hundred foot from the shoreline, why would a survey even be required?
All critical areas have to be shown on a site plan.
Even though the ge- the uh geo data shows that the uh the project is more than four hundred feet back.
Yes.
That's ridiculous.
Is that a state law or?
That is per RCA.
I don't know, our county law.
It's us.
Move to recommend.
We're the problem.
So.
New SMP that has not quite been adopted yet, oh, we don't cross streets with.
So so this is what's there currently. Um and Natalie has not dove in, like you are way more familiar with what's in the new SMP than Natalie is. So if we could try to reserve comparisons between the two. Um but this is what we currently have.
Yeah. Um okay, so we've identified steep slopes, shoreline on this property. Moving down, see what we got for streams and soil types. Looks like we do not have any hydroic soils, we do not have any prairie soils on this property. Not seeing any potential streams via that layer, there are more. Alright, so now we have our wetland layer, we're looking at wetland buffers, suspected wetlands. And wetland delineations um that we have been able to put into our system. Um so.
That suspected wetlands, the middle thing there? That's the buffer.
That's the buffer for the wetland across the street.
Oh, gotcha, oh yeah, I didn't realize that was water.
So this is looking at a.
Uh just a damp area.
And and note, like, one of the reasons we have so many boxes. Is because our base wetland layer for the critical areas ordinance does not have everything. It has not kept up with like the national wetlands inventory, state resources. And so we just, we add them to make sure that we're at least accounting for them, but then you end up with like. Three or four often conflicting um layers that our our staff is trying to navigate. And figure out, okay, well, what what then triggers the special reports and what obligation would be required?
That that buffer is like on the house, so that's a problem.
So that is max.
Yes, this is worst case scenario, you're looking at a three hundred foot buffer, which is. Um normally not the case, most of the time we can give people some good news that the buffer will most likely be reduced. Um but will require a delineation by a wetland biologist. Um there are levels to delineation, it could be a recon or it could be a full delineation. Uh reconnaissance is a more condensed report, but still requires them to go out and. Uh conduct site visits and site studies.
Now, do you only have to do that study if you're within three hundred feet?
No, that uh code requires four hundred feet at the moment. If you're within four hundred feet of a map wetland, which is confusing since our geo data has three hundred feet. Um if you're within four hundred feet of a mapped wetland, you are required to submit a report.
So so currently that wetland that you're focused on is a non SMP associated wetland, right?
Correct.
Does that wetland jump over roads? That wetland buffer jump over streets?
We have a provision in our code that allows for isolating buffers. Which a um open county road can be considered an isolating buffer. Um which we have been able to utilize. So they are able to demonstrate that this is in fact an isolating buffer, then there is no buffer beyond the road.
Do they have to submit a study to demonstrate that or is that something that the code allows like an, you know, just an administrative over the counter?
Um it's up to the discretion.
We can look at the code here real quick. Oh no, really, you have to feel this. And and mind you, this really has nothing to do with like the level of environmental protection, this is just, these are process questions.
I like to think about the difference between hoops and bars, like you can set up a high bar without having crazy hoops to jump.
So this is our code section, it is. Twenty four thirty oh five four, isolating buffers right here. Applicant shall provide the approval authority with sufficient information to enable him or her to determine whether or not the subject area qualifies. As an isolating buffer, so. The burden of proof, it falls upon the applicant.
Can you have, I I understand that there could be a difference between code and policy, can you have a policy that says we interpret this code? That non SMP associated wetlands do not have cross road buffers?
I could do code interpretation, um we'd have to maybe dig a little deeper. And um see if that would be a possibility if the code gives the director or management. The authority to be able to kind of give a director's interpretation on it. But otherwise, if the code says that and doesn't give much of a leeway into allowing an interpretation. Our hands are tied.
In a situation like that, you could probably do something like have a code interpretation that says. The director hereby recognizes that the like seeing a road on a map equals sufficient. You could do, but maybe wouldn't call that a policy?
Well, you, so here he- here's what you get into. What level of public roadway, private roadways, driveways, how many cars are they carrying, what does the road bed look like? Like that, those are the levels of conversation that our current planning team has, like what was the intent when this was written? Cause they give a few examples of isolating buffers, but it says public or it, what does it say, a public road?
I think logging roads count too. Well, I I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we understand the difference between RCW and a WAC. Is there a county version of a WAC on how to apply the RCW?
Just published our first one in June, I think of this year, an administrative procedures manual. Um focused on process, not substance. This would be substance, so this would actually be a policy decision. Where we focus the administrative procedures manual is on like. When when does someone qualify for a wetland area minor report versus a full delineation? Um what is, do we really have to go out and do all the site visits? What does it look like when someone submits a report and there is a discrepancy? So it really just focused on administrative procedures, substantive stuff. It's a higher bar and we've got to dig into a lot of questions, like if it says roadway, like well, what kind of roadway? And did it say roadway because?
Says legally established road, not including logging roads. Or railroad or other lineal facility or barrier physically separating. And functionally isolating a portion of the wetland buffer, so as long as it's a legal road, then the code says it should be fine.
I I think that this this specific example shows exactly why we need to repeal and replace.
No, so I hear you and know that we have also gotten a lot of a lot of inquiries about. An established driveway that meet, that basically is as wide as a public road and is concrete and has been there for however long.
It doesn't say driveway, it does say road, so in this situation, that is a legal road.
Private and public?
Or barrier.
Barrier.
Is that private road a barrier? Could you show that it is?
Can the frog still get across it? I mean, these are the kinds of questions that.
I'm just saying, in this case, this is a legal public road, this shouldn't be, like I get the other scenarios that are less. Less clear, but this one does seem.
And and I just, I just wanna say that you could find a wetland biologist that would argue that that is not a sufficient enough buffer.
It's not what the code says, though.
The code says the applicant has to demonstrate, it does not say that. We should just have an interpretation that applies to all roads. In most cases, that that would be considered an isolating buffer, so I don't wanna get hung up on it. But just know that like it's never as simple as just a, well, this is what it says, it's like, but then you go to another section of the code. And it conflicts. Or you send it to the state for a third party review and they will give you an example of how that road is not actually an isolating buffer.
Uh if the road was established prior to July twenty fourth, twenty twelve. Um and the area uh to be segregated from the buffer does not perform any biological or hydrological function related to. The wetland or the unsegregated portions of the buffer, those two conditions are met, then they're allowed to reduce it to the minimum.
So so we usually require them to demon- require the applicant to demonstrate those conditions have been met.
Yeah.
Which means we can't make common sense.
Well, Chris or Kaiser has five minutes left.
She hasn't even figured out she can replace her deck yet.
Alright, we're gonna skip on past the wetlands now, um and. That is pretty much where we're gonna stop with the critical areas on site. So we've established potential impact of wetlands. We've established that there is steep slopes and that there is shoreline on this property. Looking at the house placement in relation to. We're gonna say that there is in fact, this is in fact a steep slope, house placement in relation to that is right about here. From the top of a steep slope, we have a minimum requirement of a fifty foot setback. So this structure, should this be a steep slope, would be identified as a non-conforming structure within our code. Um so there are certain requirements that. Or certain code sections that would allow things to be done uh on this properties. Either through a administrative or a hearing examiner approval, so we'll kind of walk through a couple of those, so. Sandy asked if we could do a deck replacement. If this was within the fifty percent or fifty foot steep slope setback. A complete and total replacement of this deck. Would require a reasonable use exception, even if they're not expanding footprint, even if they are putting it exactly as it was. It would require a reasonable use exception.
But if they left the pillars and just replaced the deck, they wouldn't.
Correct.
Just like when you build a house in an area and you leave one wall up.
Is it a fifty percent repl- what what's the threshold? Oh boy.
Advice to the counter is that you do half the deck this year and half the deck next year?
Uh we're gonna ship a Theseus the the deck, is that what we're doing here?
So we would, under code, we allow for alterations, maintenance and repair. So maintenance would just be repainting it, restaining it, maybe replacing a couple boards. Alteration would be um modifying their. The existing physical structure beyond routine repair and maintenance, but not amounting to a complete replacement. So. That is where we get into, yes, if you were to leave one wall, if you were to leave one post, if you were to leave. A handful of boards and a couple of your uh support beams. It would be considered an alteration which could be reviewed and approved through a critical area review permit. Subject to you still giving all the necessary reports, such as a geotechnical report. Demonstrating that your new deck or replacement of your deck is not going to be impacting the slope stability.
Yeah. That's why we have so many people out there doing this without.
Yeah.
So.
Did you change your name to Commissioner loophole?
But that we've talked a lot about that, cause there's, there are um. I've heard and in certain spaces, it's like, well, you have tough provisions that means like it's more protective. What ends up happening if your provisions or the hoops are so difficult to go through? You just have people doing it without permits.
I could run across that all the time.
Yeah.
And I'm always pushing back on it, as you know.
I'm interested here in the way that a person might phrase their questions. So I I had come in and I said, hey, I need to replace an existing deck. Natalie, are you explaining to me? This, I'm not gonna call it a loophole, but this possibility of a almost complete. of a almost complete rebuild without and and declaring that a partial replacement. Is that part of your role is to guide a a person towards something like that? Or do you just present the information and let them ask you questions?
I present the information and let them ask me questions. Um, I don't wanna ever push somebody towards something one way or the other, especially if we are requiring reports still. So if I were to go at the counter and say, oh, yes, you can do this. And then the report comes back and then actually they can't, or in fact, something changes. Um, I don't want to give somebody a false hope that they could do something and then all of a sudden, actually, they do in fact need to do a reasonable use exception. Or I looked at the mapping and it looks like, oh, you don't need a sorry, a C A R P or a critical area review permit in order to do this. Their report comes back and actually says something otherwise.
Gotcha.
Be misleading, so.
Can't explain the threshold.
I can explain the threshold if they ask, um, what would be considered an alteration versus a replacement.
So repair is also defined on this, but just says means those activities associated with routine care and upkeep of a structure, development, land use or activity. A repair doesn't require permitting, correct?
Um, repairs would still require a critical area review if it's.
So if there were three rotted boards on the deck and they wanted to replace those three rotted boards, as the code is written, they would need to fill out reports to replace the three rotted boards.
They wouldn't just have to fill them out. They would have to hire someone to write.
Okay.
And the C A R P is twelve hundred bucks?
Nope, uh, C A R P is six hundred and ninety-six dollars right now.
And how long do they take?
Um, roughly ninety days.
Mark and professional reports to do any replacements on your existing debt.
That's a repair. It's not even hitting the, the, the threshold of replacement.
Correct. Replacement, uh, R U E or reasonable use exception is a hundred and ninety-eight days.
I'm just a little surprised that the public isn't even madder and set fire to this place.
I've come close.
I think this is a really, this, this is really good for you all to understand how these things get implemented.
Yeah, I'm, I'm understanding why so many people are bashing my head in on, on certain things and saying, Barry, I can't do that. Have you ever tried to get a permit through the county?
Imagine waiting, you know, four months to replace a couple boards. I'd probably just do it.
I've got one guy out there right now that's kind of getting septic approval and it's been three years.
There's, and, and to be clear, like what, even if someone does it, like the risk they run is that then they get into code compliance. So we, the kinds of things I see on the code compliance side, if you have a, a neighbor who isn't very happy with you, they'll be like, they, they replace the steps to their back door and it's protruding an additional two feet into the buffer. And then we follow up on it and, and the voluntary compliance agreement that they sign is that they'll come in and get a reasonable use exception to reconcile their replacement stairs.
At the cost of thousands of dollars.
Oh, yeah. Because if you don't, once you're in it, if you don't provide the reports and you're not gonna get an approval and then you have to remove it.
Meanwhile, I am still standing at this counter, guys, come on. And, and I have more questions, like, okay, so, okay, I, I get it, a partial replacement, that sounds fine. Now, when we put in the deck, we also put in stairs and stairs really need some maintenance. So what kind of permits do I need for those?
Maintenance would be covered under a critical area review permit. Still subject though to you demonstrating that any type of work that you are going to be doing is not interfering with slope stability. So you'd still need a technical memo from a geotech, which is normally in instances like this, one page, but we need to have it documented that there is no impact to the slope, that you guys putting um, a couple boards on an already impacted area is not going to cause a landslide.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. Thank you. Um, and then if we're gonna do some work on the deck, it actually makes sense to expand it a little bit toward the water. Now, no, we've lived there many years. We've not seen any erosion. We've had geologists look at the slope. You know, I have all that paperwork. What would, can I, can I do that expansion?
Um, an expansion towards a critical area or further into a buffer is prohibited and would require a reasonable use exception in order to be able to expand your deck by two feet. If you wanted to go further two feet and if you wanted to go further one foot into it, any expansion outside the existing footprint would require a reasonable use exception.
Okay, and one more question then on the deck. If, um, would I need, what kind of permit would I need if I wanted to put like, um, some kind of, make it a covered space, like a a three-person porch? What would, what would I need to put like a roof over it?
That would be considered an expansion of impervious surface and would most likely require a reasonable use exception. To be able to.
A roof over a solid deck changes the impervious surface.
Cause we do not consider decks impervious surface. They are considered previous unless they are paved. So if they're a wood deck um, enclosing it would require or be considered an expansion of impervious surface towards a critical area and would require a reasonable use exception.
Okay, I'll have to think about it.
Sounds like it's better awning is the, the option there.
So, I, I care deeply about the environment, but none of this is helping the environment. I think we have pretty much consensus here amongst the commission that we are not happy with how this works. Um, so I would look to staff to make the strongest recommendations possible to us of how to fix this. Also, like you said, while still being protective of the environment.
What to do?
For sure.
I've heard from several people that they've come in to get permits and they've gotten a list of professionals that they have to go to to give these special reports. They go to these professionals, they get this report, they come back in with the report and the county permit section said, no, we can't accept that report.
That, that is something that has been updated with the new administrative procedures manual. Since the code clearly says that reports are required. They should be accepted unless there are discrepancies. So imagine like the wetland that Natalie showed you. It's a pretty big wetland. If a report on the neighboring property said it was a category three wetland with a certain buffer and then one right next door said, there's no wetland, no buffer. We would then say third party review is required and third party review could be us going out and verifying. It could be calling in ecology just to keep costs down, um, but it would really be up to the applicant at that point. Um, so there are just, there are certain situations where we just can't accept it. But in most cases, the new manual says that we should accept them.
Particularly since you're recommending these particular contractors to these jobs.
We don't actually recommend contract. We're not allowed to.
Be conflict of interest.
List, yeah.
We give, like Pierce County maintains a list, Grace Harbor maintains a list. We don't maintain our own list, but we can point people to. A lot of times people just wanna know who to call. So we can make references to those lists, but we don't maintain one.
You have the qualifications that the report writer needs to meet for you to use them as a standard.
Yep, and we now actually, in the manual, we also have for when someone would be deemed not to be qualified. So I think it's, if they have three reports that they submit within a certain timeframe that need third, third party review, we could say that they're no longer qualified. Um, we haven't had that happen yet, but Lewis County actually used that provision to say that one of the wetland wetland professionals in Lewis County could no longer submit wetland reports.
Gonna go on a tiny diversion, but I think this is helpful. So I work in insurance regulation. Um, health insurance, when we re- reformed it several years ago, uh, we had this issue a lot of times where insurance companies and doctors would argue with each other. But, but this term, this phrase comes out of a code, unusual customary and reasonable. Right? And it is a cutout that says that professionals have this much space basically to make a professional decision and you can't challenge it. It reserves off a box where it doesn't make sense to quibble over it. It sounds like something like that and this process might be useful. Usual customary and reasonable.
We can look into that. There's a lot of, the way land use processes work. We, you've got just very specific permit types and so not sure if there's as much room for that. There are some, there's like a provision there for the, the director um, to make an interpretation, but even when I make an interpretation, it has to be documented, has to be made public, needs to be consistent. So just a fairly high bar, even when I make an interpretation, it has to be substantiated.
Can't be arbitrary and capricious.
Yeah, well.
There you go.
I, I guess all, what I'm saying here is it feels like there's a very, very strict adherence to the letter of the law, but the, the, it's not really written in a way where the intent of the law can do its job.
And I think that'll be as we bring, as Claire is drafting with the team and bringing things before you, keeping that in mind and having those ideas um, ready. And I think that the goal, at least from the outset was to sh, give you examples from other counties. So you can start familiarizing yourself like, well, how are other counties doing this? Don't really want ours to be the model. So, um, and that's not to say we have the same environmental standards as those counties, but how do they administer those standards? And being able to pull that apart and realize that they're two separate things to Derek's point, hoops and bars. So we can have high bars for environmental protection, but how many hoops do people have to jump through to get an answer?
So by far and away, the single question I've been asked the most about when I talk about environmental issues at a local level is wetlands. Where there seems to be the most confusion and the most likelihood of people getting angry because they misunderstand or feel like they get jerked around in the process. I've heard people say things like here in Thurston County, it, you get a rain puddle, you get a migratory bird that sits in it for three seconds and it's a wetland for the rest of its life. I know that's not accurate. I know that's extreme, but are we going to get some clarity on wetland definitions and the different types and where what recommendations we might have for both improving protections, but also being more clear?
Yeah, would you like to show them our wetland category table?
So I'll just add to that because I was here when this was done. First of all, I'll say there are people on, out there, had, probably if they were sitting here, would be patting themselves on the back right now. Cause this was one hundred percent the intention. And the same thing with the wetlands, that was a big concern of mine. And the way the definitions were written, probably not a puddle for, but like if it, if there's standing water on it for, I don't remember what the date was, but it was less than two weeks. It can be, it's a wetland.
Or high groundwater area is the other category.
Man-made ponds can be considered wetlands. So if you wanted to put a water feature in your backyard based on the definition, those are now regulated under the C A.
That's ridiculous.
And, and it, what, what if I want, what if I buy a piece, a piece of property and I wanna enhance the wetland? I wanna restore it.
If you were to enhance a wetland, you could change the wetland rating. So wetlands and their buffers are based on a rating scale. So there is a category one, two, three and four wetland.
Does that wetland delineation stop at the parcel boundary or did you just put a new restriction on your neighbor?
Does not stop at parcel boundary. And they're.
That is.
And it just, and it disincentivizes restoration. If you're restoring, enhancing and it's going to make your buffer bigger, potentially make your existing structures non-conforming or limit the use of your property. All of a sudden, like, why would you have people actively removing their invasives and all, or their neighbors are mad? But it is, it's this catch, we're like, well, we wanna encourage good stewardship.
You can't change the rating. That's ecology, right?
Oh.
The rating system comes from ecology?
So the rating forms, um.
Cause I'm looking at twenty-four thirty oh twenty-five.
It's come from, but it gets, you, you take that and you apply it to each individual. So the wetland is constantly changing and evolving.
The other point here that we'd started to touch on is it's not just people trying to build decks who are running into trouble with this. We were out doing a site visit with W D F W biologists who are trying to restore wet, wet prairies and remove dug fur and deal with dug fur encroachment and use fire to actually manage landscapes. And they can't do it because of our critical areas.
I'm, I'm just reading twenty-four thirty oh twenty-five. It says the Washington State Department of Ecology's most recent approved version of the wetland rating system for Western Washington shall be used to determine the wetlands category and its score for habitat, water quality and hydraulic, hydraulic functions. Wetland categories and function scores shall be determined as the wetland exists at the time of rating, with the exception of illegal modifications. So that doesn't, that sounds like we're using an up-to-date thing from ecology for rating, not as you implied. Is there something happening there that's not in that?
It gets rated and then we.
And then we apply.
To the rate.
Yeah, so. And I didn't say wetlands weren't being supported. I said stream types.
Oh, I thought we were talking.
Wet, wetlands have updated, like very updated agency guidance from ecology that they actually, there's two different approaches. One of them is really tied to the, to the use. So like, what is the level of impact of the use? So single families, low impact, you know, a heavy duty industrial facility is like high impact. And so the buffers are really tied. It's a combination of like how pristine is that well in and what use are you, um, proposing? None of that's reflected in ours. Um, ours, I, I think, how many buffers are there? There are so many different buffers. Oh, the different buffer options. So like current agency guidance, you're not gonna see a table with this many different buffers, buffer options.
So when it comes to wetlands, depending on the category will influence the buffer. So worst case scenario, you have a three hundred foot buffer from the edge of your wetland. Best case scenario, you have a one hundred foot from the edge of your wetland. We do have provisions that can allow administrative reductions of buffers through mitigation. So if you are trying to build a half, or I say Sandy, we were able to, for some reason, reduce a portion of your buffer. By twenty-five percent, you would have to submit a report with mitigation. Um, usually when it comes to wetlands, it's a replanting or a mitigation plan for vegetation. So they have to enhance the buffer to um, replace the impact that they are providing. So the amount of square footage of uh, impact, you're impacting two thousand square feet, you have to plant um, two thousand square feet um, of vegetation at a certain rate set by our code. So it depends on the wetland. Um, so we can administratively reduce that buffer, which has come in handy for many developments and many people who are looking to build a home or trying to replace a septic, punch a well in to be able to service their home. Um, we've been able to do that administratively, but if you are going even six inches into that twenty-five percent um, reduction, if you're going further, it is a reasonable use exception in order to be able to do the work that they would like to do. So.
And a lot of these, I would say like, uh, at least from what I've seen, a lot of the challenges come from properties that have already been developed. They were developed at some other point in time. And so when you think about like, you're not gonna put your new deck a hundred feet away from your house, like you're gonna wanna attach it to your house or you're gonna wanna build that garage or some other space in proximity to your existing home. And I mean, a lot of the R U Es fall in that category.
Yes, most of our development is not necessarily for new construction. It is to replace structures that are dilapidated, that are in desperate need of repair. They are for replacing a septic system, say they want to put in a little bit larger tank. If it's not a failing tank, it will require environmental review. It will require a permitting review process. And if they can't meet sections of twenty four fifty, which is our holy grail that we like to go to, to find as many. Opportunities for people as possible. If they can't meet. The code provisions of our non-conforming code section, they will be subject to today's standards. So if they put it in in nineteen eighty. They're now going to be subject to the twenty twenty five standards, so. There is some give that we were able to do administratively through our non-conforming code section. For all of the existing properties that are, were developed pre twenty twelve. However, there are still limitations there, what we are able to be able to provide them in support for what they would like to do with their property.
I I remember earlier you were saying, cause the map showed three hundred feet of buffer. And you were saying that the rule is four hundred feet of buffer.
Four hundred feet that triggers a report.
So, okay, I was gonna say, it was interesting, cause like the maximum amount of points, it maxes out at three hundred, nine or more points.
So we have a hundred foot buffer on our largest buffer to trigger the requirement of a report.
I think the idea there is like they card people that look thirty and younger, even if you're only. Well, I mean, the difference between. A nine point and an eight point is twenty feet. I I I don't know, like if we're measuring it in twenty feet and then extra hundred on top seems. Extreme. Like if we're measuring in twenty increment chunks, then let's go one increment over, like I just. It seems weird. It doesn't seem like it's designed to actually protect anything.
Been describing R U E's like almost as if it's a dead end, but obviously some folks get them. What does it effectively mean? Is it an extra three thousand, extra five thousand? Is it extra time? Is it other factors? When? It it's not a dead end.
No, so a reasonable use exception is basically granting them the variance to do the minimum work necessary. In order to complete what they would like to do, so. Say you would like to build a a home, put in a driveway, a septic tank and a well. And you need a reasonable use exception in order to do all of that. What you are approved for is essentially the bare minimum to do that work, that scope of work. So if you were to want to, once you get that. Realize, oh, actually I need to enlarge my septic tank or I need to. Actually have a. Holborn, I need to put a garage in. You weren't necessarily approved for that and thus you would have to re-go through that process. So they just grant you the minimum extent necessary to complete the scope of work that you submitted.
I think it's not a dead end. It is a, it is a big financial burden. It's time, because you've got about ten thousand dollars by the time you're done with just application fees and that's not what you've paid for your reports and depending on the reports, you could be. Could be fifteen or twenty thousand dollars if it's full on delineations. And I think. The reason that Claire did an audit was really like, well, what are we getting out of the additional review? Like, are they denying them? Are they throwing out? Staff recommendations and conditions and what we found was ninety three percent of the time, they're being accepted and what. When I see that, I go, well, why can't we turn those into clear and objective standards? Like if the hearings examiner isn't providing. A service beyond what the staff are recommending, then we can go through all of those. You know, all of the, like, and compile lists of clear and objective standards. That then just can be reviewed administratively. So we've, I mean, we've got, like, we only went back to twenty seventeen. But we've got a lot of information there and Claire organized it by the type of R U E, the type of critical area. So it'll be a wealth of knowledge when we're putting together proposals for the planning commission. That are really data driven through years of processing.
And didn't you say that more than fifty percent of applications trigger a C A O?
It's seventy percent of all applications that come into the permit, like land use applications are environmentally related. So that's deeper C A O. And that's actually increased this year with the critical area review permits, so.
So how many is it, there some are approved through administrative and how many? If if we're getting seventy five over the last, since twenty seventeen, that have had to go to a hearings examiner, how many have been approved? Hundreds, is it thousands?
Oh, of all critical area review permits? Most I would say get approved with conditions. So they're not just approved carte blanche, they're approved with like, and you shall do blank.
That's fine, but what's the volume? Is it like similar volume or way, like ninety percent of them get through that way?
Administratively?
Yeah, most get through, I mean. Cause we're, we're also like, if something is not going to make it, we don't want people spending their money. If there's no way that they can do it. I mean, there's clear enough standards that we can usually say, yeah, no, that one is not even going to come close. So it's, I don't know.
I mean, we have a good amount of ones that I think we're able to slot into. Discretionary replacements and that can be approved and reviewed through a critical area review permit, which is administrative. But there are a bunch of them that we wish that we could administratively approve. I sat in on a reasonable use exception hearing on Tuesday. It lasted twenty minutes. And it was a basically just staff giving the rundown. No other comment from anybody except for thank you and. That was the end of the hearing. So. Some of these things that we're even taking to hearing, staff. Could approve administratively, uh, cause that was for a replacement of an structure and the existing footprint. But because of they weren't necessarily needing the discretionary replacement code section. They had to go through an R U E. So some of those things. Are are fairly straightforward, but due to the administrative hoops, they have, they have to go through this process.
So we've talked through all the ridiculous things we don't like and how they work, but what are the things we can do to improve the environmental protections?
Protections or processes?
Protections.
The 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 G I, so I'm really excited about the new like mapping that was just completed this year by D N R. And which will have implications on our whole, like how we administer landslide hazards, so much more accurate. So there'll be new things that our current layers aren't catching. There'll also be a lot of things where it's like. No, D N R's determine those are not actually hazards. They, people won't have to go through all these additional reports. So just a drill down into like the best available science that they have. Those maps are really neat. I, the site potential tree height, I don't know if Claire wants to speak to that, the the grant that she got, but that's really exciting.
Yeah. There'll be more to come on it, because we're still working through it with ecology, but. Like, we're looking at even just totally different methods for how something like the buffer that a stream or river has. Uh, would be calculated and the difference, like the reason for making a change like that would be that. More sciences come out, more studies have been conducted, the state has put that together and said. What, like with site potential tree height, for an example, one of the most important uh, functions for water and aquatic habitat quality. Uh, that the nearby land has is in forested areas at least. Providing like wood debris and shade from trees. So the most effective area to protect is the area within one. Site potential tree height, which is for that given site, how tall a tree could possibly be. Away from where that water is. And so one of the things I think that will go alongside really well with. Fixing the hoops up and making the answers clearer when people are going through administrative processes and getting permits. Is also knowing that when we do need to apply these standards, which we will still need to do. That they're also backed up by the best science that's out there right now. They are backed up by the best state guidance that's out there right now. Um, and there is a strong nexus to real environmental protection and not just kind of going through the motions of like, well, this is required. Because I said, so here you go, which isn't to, to say that is exactly what's happening now. But I think that's the impression that a lot of permit applicants get because it's so complicated. That people have a hard time seeing the real connections between the protections and what's actually physically happening in the environment.
Commissioner Kaiser has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna also sort of pair with what Claire just said in that. Back to Commissioner Peszinger's question about what can we do to better protect the environment, I think. Is if we can clarify and simplify these regulations in a way where people can see. What the intent is, that that it doesn't seem capricious, that it's sort of based in good science. I think people, more people will go through the process to get the permit and we will see fewer. Fewer folks just saying, I'm just never going to get through this process. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna cut those trees and build that deck or whatever it is they're thinking of doing.
Got another one, just so you guys can keep your eyes open as well, but some of my late night reading has been looking into. Provisions for wildlife habitat corridors, because that is not something we currently have. And so given the, the direction of the new comp plan, you know, trying to figure out some innovative provisions. That we might be able to weave into the critical areas ordinance.
Have you seen any decent examples of that? Cause I don't think a lot of jurisdictions think about.
No, a lot of, so far it's like fencing, but then it's trying to figure out, we don't usually regulate fences if they're under a certain height. And so it's like how, don't want to write standards that we're not going to be able to effectively implement. And so maybe ends up being more on the incentive side, into program based, but I am on the lookout for those.
Wildlife corridors come in all shapes and sizes and I asked Natalie if I could repair my stairs. It turns out those stairs are wildlife corridor. Um, we had a bear come up uh, from. From the bottom the other day, uh, he arrived in our backyard on his, on his way uh, to elsewhere. And so we're happy to facilitate the uh, ability of critters to get to where they need to be, whether they're otters, bears, foxes, coyotes.
Probably no fully enclosed deck railings.
So Snoke, Comish County has uh, wildlife corridors.
They do. King County also has a, a, a pretty longstanding wildlife corridor management plan. And so it's digging into their C A O provisions. It's easier to find policies and maps than it is to find provisions. They're probably going to be woven into like wildlife habitat conservation areas.
Yeah, a lot of King County's focuses on the still water natural area.
So I think there's opportunities there. Just have to figure out what they are.
Some mammoth, apparently.
Commissioner Casino.
When Sandy comes in to the permit counter to look about changing some treads on her stairs and you guys. Do a critical area review and you notice that her septic system is inside of a wetland. Do you make her replace her septic system before you let her?
We used to. Compliance issue, we used to say you could get no permit.
Until you were.
Until you were rectify that and now unless it's. Tied directly to whatever it is, so let's say the stairs themselves were the compliance issue. Almost every rural property probably does something and we don't want to penalize people for trying to actually.
What if Sandy had a, um, her septic system was in a wetland? But between her house and the wetland was only eighty feet. And she wanted to move it out of the wetland, but then it would only be forty feet out, so it'd still be within the buffer. Would she be allowed to do that? Cause marginally better would be better than. Not doing it.
Depends. Unfortunately, it would depend on where it would fall within that outer twenty five or inner seventy five percent. Um, regardless if if they're moving it further away, if it's not fully outside the buffer that can be approved administratively. We're still looking at having to potentially take it to the hearing examiner for consideration and. Um, ultimately a decision.
That's a, that's a bad idea. I think anytime we can make things even marginally better, we should encourage it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're, we're running long.
And we don't need to do my property. I I had my dreams crushed earlier today.
I get the sense that I'm unlikely to see this through to the end with you all. I feel that there is uh, some significant consensus around wanting to protect the environment. I think it's important to remember that humans, human families and human communities are a part of that environment. Um, and that there needs to be balance. In, in thinking about what is in the environment and it's not necessarily apart from us, we are part of it. We need more housing in this county. We, we need people to live in homes that are safe and. You know, and, and, and meet their needs, so they need to be able to do work on their homes. Um, so anyway, I would like to see some language from staff. That kept in mind what the goal is and if the language doesn't clearly move towards that goal, it gets eliminated completely. And I don't know what the other planning commissioners feel about that, if we wanted to take a temperature. On that kind of guidance, but um, something that is. Much easier to read and understand and, and.
And apply.
And apply. And, and requires less trees to be cut down because it's less pages. Uh, that, that is something I would like to see.
This is the average file size of a reasonable use exception. This one went to caring a couple of months ago.
How many copies do we request?
Oh, this is the skim down, I guess I should say. Um, there are a couple versions of a wetland report in here. Um, there are a couple versions of, I think, a geotech, um, and then a couple variations of site plans, but this is. Normally we require a submittal to have multiple copies of site plans to be divided out.
We're also, I think, living in a time when affordability is a real concern for most people in our community. I would, I would like to see ways that people don't have to spend a bunch of money on reports of things, if, if that's possible. Um, that those situations are, you know, reserved for when it, it clearly is needed.
I'd just like to echo what the chair said, but I'm, I'm also very concerned, because I've seen a lot of it in the last seventeen years. Because of the permit process uh, being so difficult, people doing so much without even applying for permit. And rather, you know, even if they get turned into compliance and they have to make changes, the fine is less than what the permit process would be. Uh, and that is of huge concern for me for the environmental impact. That we've got so many people doing that because of the cost and the redundancy and reporting and all that stuff. I'd rather see that particular portion of the C A O refined to where we got a, a good, solid process that's understandable. Which would also help to protect the environment if more people actually applied for permits and got them. So from, from my standpoint, I agree with Mr. Peszinger, that would be a huge step. In helping the environment instead of hurting it, if we can get more people to apply for permits. By reducing costs, reducing bureaucracy and making it more timely for them to be able to do it. Without cutting buffers and stuff like that.
Is there a? I, I think at one point you guys were developing a dec- decision. Is there a, um, I, I think at one point you guys were developing a dec- decision matrix on how a. Permit, a, a permit processor would go through step by step to figure out exactly what needs to be done on a, on an application. And so if somebody comes in, you, you could actually give them a whole list of things that they need to consider for their property. Where they go from each of those steps. Is that something that's still being formulated and could be published for the public?
Uh, uh, Andrew Bond, the new community development manager, he's working on that with our E and O team, Miriam's team. Um, it's probably still a few months out, just given all the other, all the other requests.
Are you hoping to get a new C A O before you publish something?
I mean, we, we were actually gonna start off more with all of the new permit review timelines under state law and those won't change. Um, it's just which, which type of permit do you end up needing to get um with the new C A O? So that, that, that's at least what he was focusing on. Pierce County's got some great materials that he was working with Miriam to model, model after.
To, to quote the nineteen ninety-seven video game Final Fantasy Tactics, uh. If the penalty for a crime is a fine, then that law only applies to the lower class. And what I mean by that is if we do all this work of making this process much easier. And we remove the incentive to do it illegally, then I think. We should consider also making sure that that penalty, or at least, even if it's not our place. The penalty should increase commensurately. Like, if it is an easier process now and you can do it, then it should be a bigger disincentive to break the rules.
Because the fine doesn't even include having to do all this.
Oh, so most, uh, to the credit of most landowners, when they get a notice of violation. The voluntary compliance agreement and needing to go through permits is the path that I would say seventy to eighty percent of them are on. So they, they do actually pay permit fees and have to submit the reports. Um, and one of the things we're actually gonna be proposing to the board is that we double the fees. For compliance-related permits as that disincentive, so. Come in when you're supposed to and the permit costs this much. If, if you have to come in after the fact, after the fact permit, it's gonna be.
You, you, you understand what I'm saying, though. Like, if we're making this easier, then not following the rules should carry a heavy penalty.
Yeah, well, and you might.
You have to go back to the old system and follow the old rules.
It's, it's also, also do want, do want to add a point of clarification here. We, we talked about this with affordable housing, but the example we saw was. Modifying a deck on a home valued over a million dollars, right? Like, that is not necessarily the same experience someone who is. Closer to an urban core who's trying to build affordable housing is going to experience.
So I, I would. It, it is.
It is, I know, just wanna, I just wanna put out there.
And, and this R C A O apply, like, right now, this C A O applies to our urban growth areas, which is why I was saying. Let's just focus on our rural areas and let's take a different look at our, or take a, a fresh look at the U G As. When the cities are done updating their own codes, cause this, if you apply this to your U G As, you're not, you're not getting. The level of housing that you need to address housing needs. The other thing I, a lot of the inquiries we're getting now and the way it affects affordability, I would say in a rural area, someone wanting to add on the room. To bring in someone to their home that needs housing or to build an A D U or a detached A D U. On their existing lot and a lot of them will trigger R U Es. And a lengthy process. And in those cases, I actually just heard from someone, he specializes in A D Us. And he says, it's the timing issue. Like, a lot of times when you need to bring someone onto your property, either an older generation or younger generation. Timing is, like, you need to do it within a certain timeframe. And so when you add an R U E that could take six, six to nine months with all the back and forth, it's like. Gets really hard. So, anyway, does have impacts.
It's not a structure. Right, parked in the yard.
That vindictive pond you built in your backyard.
Being able to fix your house. Um, okay, well, I feel like there's. Some alignment in maybe where we wanna.
And to be clear, we will not have drafts for a while, so we might have to revisit a little bit of this. As we, you know, Claire's and the team start developing drafts for you to actually take a look at, but I appreciate the clear guidance. For the work that we're gonna be undertaking. It is helpful.
And I might suggest that at the end of the process, we do this again with someone else's property and see how the experience goes.
Using, using the new draft. Yeah, yeah.
Happy to come back in.
Sorry about your deck.
I know, dang.
Side by side for a.
Um, okay, I'm gonna look around the room because if nobody else has something they. Are desperate to say right now, we're gonna go to calendar with agenda items.
Staff update.
Okay. Oh, staff update, sorry.
Staff, I'll keep it brief. I promised my team that I would wish everybody a happy new water year. It is the beginning of the new water year. Hydrologists.
Oh, fun. I'm never gonna wish us a happy government shutdown.
Happy or new.
Okay, now calendar with agenda.
It's been a long day.
What is Title Twenty revision? We're looking at our next meeting on October fifteenth, is that correct?
Title, so Title Twenty is the primary zoning code for all of rural county. And so we're exploring, it really hasn't had a big update since the nineties. So.
Twenty ten, gonna be my guest for a date.
Related question to that real quick. Um, I just was reading about uh manufactured homes in city of Olympia. Been looking at their volume and the zoning that most of them are under, which included commercial. Um, do you, do you have any idea right off the top of your head? I think we have something like sixty-five parks in the county. Um, do you have any idea what they're zoned at most commonly?
A lot of those are probably in the cities and the U G As. I know. I don't know. I do know that part of the.
Title Twenty discussion.
Um, yeah, well, there are some updates to Title Twenty included in the package that you recommended to the board. To make it easier for at least our existing parks to expand. The challenge in rural areas is, is water and sewer.
Like, your concern is not so much about expansion, although that's nice.
Or retention expansion.
It's about if they're zoned for something that has a higher value, then it becomes a, a, you know, displacement.
So I can say this, in rural county, we have hardly any commercial zoning, like, at all, if you look at a map. So my guess is that it's not commercial zoned. If it's in rural county, it's the U G As. We have hardly any industrial zoning. Like, if you look at a map, so your purples, I don't, I don't know if you wanna bring up, but your purples are your industrial and your reds are your commercial. And if you look at Thurston County rural, it's yellow and that's residential. Grand Mound, Grand Mound barely has any, um.
Thank you. Uh, is there any reason to believe we won't have quorum on October fifteenth? No, okay, how about November fifth? Okay, then go to the order. At a previous meeting, maybe the last one, maybe the one before, we talked about potential guidance related to and, and rules about. Limitations around uh data center and Ohio electrical usage. Um, I thought it was strange that data centers were particularly called out. Um, I just learned quite a bit more in the last few days about electrical usage and data centers and. It's shocking. Uh, can now see very clearly why they would wanna call it out separately. Um, they often refer to these newer ones as hyper data centers and. They just had a conference of governors here in Olympia, just what, twenty-six, twenty-seven? Uh, to talk about nuclear, um, because that's the number one thing that's usually getting pushed to power some of these. The entire Olympia Capitol campus uses fifty megawatts. Entire Thurston County with three hundred thousand residents uses a hundred megawatts. A hyper data center uses a thousand megawatts, ten times as much as the entire county combined.
They're already working on two gigawatt centers. It's not even, they're not even done yet.
So these things are insane in the capacity to use both electricity and water. And uh, it just, uh, just shocking point, so pay attention to data centers. I just, uh, last week toured the Idaho National Lab. Nuclear facility with a number of legislators um to see. Uh, where nuclear is. Um, it's still a ways away. Um, we'll still need other sources of power before we're there, but. It, it's on the horizon. These small modular reactors um are an answer to that. To that problem. And the technology is not, is not the technology of forty, fifty years ago. It's, it's a whole different ballgame. I don't even know if I agree with nuclear or not nuclear. I don't have enough knowledge to be wise about that, but another interesting. Thing I learned and I, again, this could be questionable as to its accuracy, but. The A I itself that most people think driven off of data centers. Um, most people think, okay, that's gonna mean a huge increase in our overall electrical usage. But what a lot of people have not considered is that A I is actually teaching us how to use energy more efficiently. And they actually expect it to be a net decrease of around two percent. Um, even though massive increase in usage, but increase in efficiencies, so lower total usage.
The biggest energy use with any A I model was the training. It's extremely intensive on water and power. Are you advocating for a P U D then?
Always.
Always.
Public internet.
Put the internet under the P U D. Let's have the, the market compete with that. Look, we're doing my fifteen dollar fiber bill for gigabit internet.
Hey, anything else for the good of the order? Then, having no further business, we are adjourned.
Thank you. My grandpa would say my back teeth are floating.